Let's pray. My grace, and we follow humbly come to you, Lord, thanking you for this day. And thank you once again for the many blessings. Lord, I continue to pray for this board and the members for strength and wisdom as we make decisions for Stanley County. Thank you so much for the county that we lived in, that we're so blessed to be here. Lord, I pray for the ones in our community that are sick and that are hurting. Lord, I pray for each member here tonight, or each person that's come this way. Lord, continue to bless them. Lord, I pray for our police, our fire, EMS, the ones that protect and serve us daily. Lord, I pray especially for our military and their families for the sacrifices they make. These things I ask of your precious name. Amen. If you wouldn't mind standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone should have a copy of the agenda, any corrections or adjustments to the agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Got a motion by Vice Chairman Barbie, second by Commissioner Hatley. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose. Motion carries seven votes. All right, first item is public comment. I have 1, 2, 3, 4 folks signed up for public comment. First one is Mr. Harold Schmecker.
Just for the folks that maybe online can see what I'm passing out there. My name is Harold Schmecker. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. What I've passed out is a before and after photos of Lindsey Nicole House, who worked as a nurse and is now vaccine injured. She has personally interacted with 50 vaccine-injured healthcare workers and is aware of well over 100. She would like to come speak, but she's unable. Her heart monitor alarm can go off just walking to the mailbox. Deanna Hamby was planning to be here as well. She's also vaccine injured, but today was one of her bad days. She was not able to make it. She got her first shot in July of '21 due to employer requirement, felt sick that day, and shortly afterward had to be hospitalized. When she was unable to return her work, her employer told her that she was vaccinated and protected, and she should not be out longer than two days. They fired her. She lost her job, her car, and now has a shoebox full of medications that she's been prescribed to try to manage her symptoms. She was not on any medications prior to the vaccination. Margot Borg is also vaccine-injured, and she's here today to tell you her story. We'll be speaking next. I spoke here last year in June and July. I told you about my research in your registrar's office, looking at your COVID death certificates. In 2020, you had 29 COVID deaths. In 2021, when the vaccine came out, you had 91. I also told you about the data that Pfizer used for its approvals that clearly show the JABs increase injury and death. For example, in the 5-11-year-old dataset that was sent to FDA for approval, Pfizer said that for every one life saved, 122 children would get myocarditis. I also told you about, when I was here last year, about the plan to target children was in order to add the childhood schedule and shift the liability from pharma to the federal government, which has obviously proved out to be correct. Your health department and the CDC fully believes uninformed public medical experiments are necessary. The rest of us believe that uninformed public medical experiments are unethical, immoral, and have no place in free society. No one wants to believe that our healthcare system would be part of this, but the seven largest healthcare systems in North Carolina received $7.1 billion in COVID incentives just in 2021. That apparently was the price needed for them to participate. Over $30-plus million went to this county, and many businesses also received funding as well, with strings attached to support the mitigation strategies. We look at the production quality of producing billions of shots in a short amount of time. The issue of truncated mRNA led the European Medicine Agency, the EMA, to raise a major objection before its December 2020 conditional approval of the vaccine. The Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine contains truncated mRNA. The lack of quality enforcement most likely resulted in drastic product quality variations from batch to batch. From what I read on this, truncated mRNA may not contain a stop code on, and it fails to give a brake signal. The protein translation process would continue endlessly. I believe a local health department should put public health as its top priority. The only option to restore integrity and trust to the Stanley County Health Department, I think, is for you to disband your health board and replace it with one that puts public health in front of healthcare system profits. First, their belief and support for uninformed public medical experiments is reason to disband. The document that was handed out at the recent health board meeting before is misleading and dishonest and a breach of the public trust. Nowhere on this document does it show the definition of vaccination, and nowhere does it show how many received at least one shot. This document bases vaccination on 14 days after the second shot. Must have been a lot of effort to scrub the data, to eliminate anyone that got a shot but didn't meet their definition. Your health department would have classified Deanna Hamby's hospitalization as unvaccinated and then used that to promote more vaccinations. This is outrageous and incredibly offensive to those injured. This is really premeditated deception. For that reason, you should replace your health board. The damage caused is extreme. We're going to continue to see the damage for this for generations to come. There was always a question of safety. Your health department should have put the safety of the public in front of the money that was coming in. This is another reason to disband. Finally, the cruelty and arrogance that they've acted with is stunning, and again, another reason to disband. So I'm here to support the resolution, but also want you to consider replacing your health board. Please hear the voices and the cries of the vaccine injured. They deserve better. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Margot Borg.
I have some things I'd like to approach. I have some scans of my brain and some cognitive testing. And with your permission, I'm also going to ask my husband to stand by me. I sometimes have uncontrolled body movements and inability to speak and seizures. So I have practiced and will be as calm as I can telling you about what I've experienced.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, commissioners, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to tell you about what I have experienced with the vaccine and also to let you know that I have been a nurse for 31 years. I've been promoted to leadership in every role that I've ever had. The last job that I worked at, I worked for 11 years, and I ran an inpatient hospice unit. When COVID broke out, I set up the COVID unit, wrote all the policies and procedures for COVID patients, families, and our own staff to keep them safe. I became certified through the CDC as an infection control nurse. I am by no means an anti-vaxer. My father suffered from polio, and vaccines have always been of value in my family. But my life changed the day I took the second Moderna shot on January 29, '21. I took this shot voluntarily. I immediately, within hours, had neurological symptoms. These neurological symptoms progressed. There's not enough time here to tell you everything that I've been through over the last 26 months, so I just want to hit on a few highlights. Not only did I lose my job, my career, what filled my heart, I lost the hobbies that I love, and my ability to earn an income as a result of my vaccine injury. At my worst, I had six to 10 seizures a day, often lasting 30 minutes, and I would stop breathing. I wouldn't inhale, I wouldn't exhale. My diaphragm was paralyzed and didn't move. I needed someone to be with me all the time to get me to breathe through the seizures. This was a pretty big impact on my family. I've always been a strong, independent woman, and now I was at the mercy of others. I'm sorry, I just lost my place here. I apologize. And I also lost my ability to do basic activities of daily living. I could not shower or dress without help. I couldn't cook. I couldn't do laundry. I couldn't drive. I couldn't go to the store. I couldn't even go through a store without having neurological symptoms. Anything that was too stressful put my brain into overdrive, and my body couldn't handle As a result of my vaccine injury, I've also spent $31,000 of our own money trying to get help and trying to get healthier. I had to fire several doctors. These are doctors I worked with in ICU for 20 years who refused to believe that I had suffered a vaccine injury. But I tell you, my life changed that day and has never been the same. I finally went and got some hyperbaric oxygen therapy sessions, and the scans of my brain that you see is after 60 sessions of hyperbaric therapy. Hyperbaric therapy is one of the therapies that is suggested for traumatic brain injuries and also for the vaccine injuries. The areas in dark blue of the scan show the most damaged areas to my brain. Lighter blue is less damage. Green is normal. The yellow indicates excessive activity. Orange and red is hyperexcessive activity in my brain and dysfunction of communication in multiple areas of my brain. I've also submitted to you my small cognitive testing, because I could not go through full cognitive testing because of the strain on my brain would cause a seizure. And I was told this by three separate medical professionals not to do that for that reason. So this is just a short cognitive assessment of me, and I have always been a high performer, a go-getter. I raised a drill sergeant. I am an adventure seeker and not one to sit down and lie down easily. But this has taken its toll on me. You can see in the cognitive assessment that I am testing far below what the average person is testing of my age, and that's new for me. I was not like that before the vaccine. I would like to urge you to support the resolution, not just because of what I have suffered, but I know that there are other people like me. I know other nurses that have these neurological problems as well and aren't able to work. We have no recourse, no way to resume what we've lost as far as our careers and our ability to earn incomes. And the things that we've lost that we love to do, I'm a scuba diver, I'm a sailor, I'm a swimmer. I can no longer do those things because it's no longer safe. I never know what's going to happen next. I can have good days, and I can have bad days where I can't even get out of a chair, drive a car, or really function at all. I urge you also to support the resolution because these vaccines are experimental. They are an untested platform. Never before have we used liponanoparticles, which we now know have an affinity for the brain, which means that those nanoparticles will go to the brain. The shots were supposed to stay in the arm of those that received them. We now know they go all over the body and cross the blood-brain barrier. So I think it's very important that people be informed and not be pushed to take these vaccines. One of the problems that's being experienced is adverse events are not being reported to the vaccine adverse incident recording system. And so people do not have the full facts. These vaccines are being pushed on people, and they don't have informed consent. Informed consent is a critical piece of medical freedom. Informed consent says, before we do any procedure, any operation, you have been informed of the risks and the benefits. People that are receiving COVID vaccines are not getting that information. They are not getting the facts of the adverse events. And for that reason, I really want to see us put a stop to the mandates to force people to take vaccines. As an American, we must maintain our freedoms to decide what we put in our body. That's just a basic American freedom I think that we all would agree we enjoy. And informed consent is a big part of that. Furthermore, we know that these vaccines don't prevent COVID. We are seeing increased cases in the hospitals of patients that have received vaccines and boosters. They are sicker than other patients with COVID because they suspect that their immune systems are not working because of all these injections. A vaccine prevents disease. These vaccines are leaky. They do not prevent disease. Therefore, we really shouldn't be calling them vaccines. I'll let you decide what to call them. I have a name for them, but I won't mention it here. And most importantly, I ask you to consider the freedoms that we could be giving up by going ahead with such mandates that force people to do things that go against what they believe. Thank you.
Mr. Borg, did you want to say something you had to sign up to?
Myself? No, I did not.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jason Fitz.
I'll be brief. First, I just want to thank Commissioner Crump for proposing tonight's resolution in support of the Medical Freedom Act. Much more than a statement of support, this resolution constitutes a necessary defense and proclamation of the truth. The truth is, the COVID pandemic ushered in the greatest violation of individual liberty in our lifetime, and we must take the necessary steps to ensure this never happens again. While just the beginning, the resolution in support of the Medical Freedom Act's a great start. Second, I want to thank Commissioner Barbie for proposing a resolution in opposition to Medicaid expansion. While our state leaders claim this is free money for our state, we've learned very painfully through the pandemic, there is no such thing as federal money without strings attached. Also note, our federal government is broke. This is all deficit spending that will add to the national debt and further inflate the cost of living for all American families. In February 2020, Medicaid enrollment in Stanley County was stable at just under 13,000. Since then, enrollment has increased 42% to over 18,300. More than 70% of the 600,000 North Carolinians that will become eligible through expansion are able-bodied adults with no children. Worst of all, this will not accomplish its intended goal of providing healthcare to poor families. Instead, Medicaid expansion will enslave even more of the population and our state to the whims of an increasingly tyrannical federal government. There is nothing conservative about implementing programs not authorized by the Constitution, racking up government debt, and enslaving people to the state. Instead, as this resolution asserts, we should promote free-market solutions that increase supply, thereby driving down the cost of medical care for everyone. I urge your support of both these resolutions. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. That's the last one I had. Does anybody else like to address the board?
In regards to this issue or anything?
Anything.
I would like to, if there's an opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
State your name, sir.
I'm Travis Alley with Stanley Construction Services.
Thank you, Travis.
Yes, sir. So I don't have all the facts. Just on behalf of myself, several other builders in the county, on behalf of the Stanley County Home Builders Association, just wanted to bring up a concern we have regarding, maybe using the wrong terminology, impact capacity fees on utilities for new construction.
System development.
System development fees. So I think in September, this is when the new fees took... Is that when they came into account?
Yes.
Okay. So now that we've got a better understanding of these, the board had passed two fees, one for sewer and one for water for Stanley County. So those fees roughly are $11,000 per unit. So looking at that, my original thought was that if a new house was being built, that is the fee that would be imposed. But now, as we're developing in the county, we're now seeing that we are paying the development fees, and then on top of that, we are paying these system fees as well. So I don't know if the board was aware of what was going to happen when y'all passed this. I just want to bring it to your attention, just want to have you reconsider. If this was your intention, I don't think that it would have been your intention. So as a developer, we are paying for water, and we are paying for sewer. We are putting in all the infrastructure. We're doing the testing, and we're turning it over to the county for your ownership. So that $11,000 fee now for a house in my development that I'm doing in Millingport is now $24,000, which, like I say, I don't think the board would have passed that knowing that financial impact on a per-house basis. So City of Albemarle, same house I'm building in Stanley County, my fees there are 0.5% of my overall sale cost. And this number I'm quoting you is based upon, in 2022, there was 1,027 homes sold in Stanley County. Average sales price, $316,883. So when I tell you City of Albemarle, I pay their fees 0.5%. Stanley County, you're 3.6% of sale. That's without my cost. If I incur my cost that we spent to develop the water and sewer, you are 7.7%. And that's where I think there's a disconnect. I can't believe that that was passed knowing that you were adding 7% per home sale. So that's what I'd like for the board to reconsider. And I don't know when the time to do that, if there's more information needed, if I need to present something else. More than willing to do that. So if you go to Oakboro, 0.7%. If I go to Locust, which Chairman, you're well aware, has been the most expensive over time, 2.8%. Norwood, 0.7%. And once again, Stanley County is at 3.6%. That doesn't include my cost. So my concern is, I'm not an expert in water and sewer. My conversation with Mr. Wingo over the past few years developing this community is that additional users, capacity, future rates, I mean, you need that system to grow, to make it functional, to make it viable. And I'm afraid with this, that's not going to happen. I reached out to Brandon, being my representative. There's two other developments going on in Millingport. Both of those had reasonable access to sewer. Neither one of those are using public sewer. So I don't know for sure that the reason was the $7,300 fee, but I'd guarantee it has something to do with it. So what I'm afraid is going to happen is, I'm going to come to Albemarle and build my next house, or I'm going to Oakboro, or I'm going to Norwood, or I'll just build a house and do well in septic and be cheaper by 50% than what you're proposing right now. So like I said, I don't think that was the intention of the board when you discussed this originally. I had no idea. I knew the fee was coming. I had no idea, common sense-wise, that I would have to pay for the water and sewer and then turn around and pay for the fee on top, or we would have probably been more vocal at the time. We understand, you've got to pay for infrastructure. We're not debating that. We're just debating the amounts. So is it something the board can reconsider? Reevaluate?
I would say this...
No, I'm not.
We will...
I'm just saying, is there an opportunity moving forward to retable this discussion to have more information? Do you need more people like me? I mean, the 180 members that we have in our Home Builders Association, that need to be present? I mean, how do we make this a topic? Because this is huge, Scott. We're talking about whether your county gets my tax base. I mean, I'm putting $15 million in your tax base in my development, but if we stop doing that, I mean, I would think that would be something you would want to address.
We can certainly look into it, yes, sir.
Okay. So do I reach back out in a month, or how do we approach that?
I'm not sure how to answer your question.
Okay. I'm not trying to put pressure on you. I'm just trying to understand how it works with the commission.
We can certainly, as a board, take a look at it, yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Try to be brief in my presentation. It's not really in-depth. Is there anything else that you need more information on? Please let me know. I'd be more than happy to present that. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Travis. Appreciate it.
What's your contact information? Or if you could leave that, I mean, you might want to announce it here, but if you could leave it for us? Thank you.
All right. Were there anyone else that would like to sign up or like to talk in public comment? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. Our next item is livestock arena design and build guaranteed maximum price amendment. And our presenter is Mr. Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And there are several members from the Livestock Arena Committee here this evening. I know, saw Curtis Farr and Mr. Frank Simpson. And gosh, who else we have out there? Jeff Williams and Reggie Medlin, and Molly Alexi is also here. So several other folks are here, and they can maybe address any questions that you may have. The county contracted with MCT, it's probably been close to a year ago, through a design-build methodology for the construction of a livestock arena out at the Aggreg Civic Center, which was actually part of the sort of master plan when the facility was conceived back in, you know, 35 years ago. And so they've been working on developing a guaranteed maximum price for the contract to construct the livestock arena. They've developed that guaranteed maximum price at $5.8 million. The design cost is $143,685, and the construction figure is just shy of $5.7 million at $5.699 million. That $5.6 million does include a $200,000 contingency that hopefully one won't need, but is there to buffer any unforeseen things that may come up during the project. but is there to buffer any unforeseen things that may come up during the project. Based on the county's available fund balance, reserves, private, nonprofit, and government fundraising that's occurred to date on the project, we're not, staff doesn't necessarily recommend you take out any debt for this project. If you're going to move forward with it, it's recommended that you use your reserves. You know, as you know, you all have been saving these reserves to do these capital projects over the last few years. And so staff would, if you're going to do the project, staff would recommend that you'd pay for it with cash. You have about 2.2, almost 2.3, that's been committed or received already to date. We've spent about $86,000 over the life of the project on initial plans, site due diligence, marketing for fundraising. So the balance you have currently in the project fund is 2.2 million. So the additional funding that would be needed in order to execute the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment is $3.6 million, $3,632,021. And so before you this evening is asking the board to review and consider approval of the proposed Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the existing MCT Design-Bill contract, and authorize staff to review and execute the contract amendment, dock bits upon review and approval by the county attorney. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have about the project.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for County Manager Lucas?
I guess the Arena Committee and all are still going to continue to raise funds to help us out.
That's our understanding. I think they do feel like as, because there are some things that aren't included in that construction, bleachers. It's got a concrete tiered, you know, sort of stand, so I mean, you wouldn't necessarily have to have the bleachers immediately to have events in there, but obviously you'd like to have metal bleachers at some point. So you have metal bleachers, the big fans that circulate air in the arena, as well as an AV system. So yes, that group is committed to continuing to fundraise for those specific items. We're also going to, we initially secured a $200,000 grant through the Agricultural Trust Fund for panels, gates, and other things that would be needed for the livestock arena. We had to turn that funding back in because the project just wasn't moving at the pace that the state wanted us to do. We will actually go after that $200,000 as well, again, through the Ag Trust Fund to help offset the cost of operating, some of the operational things that we'll need in order to make that facility work. And so, but yes, to answer your question, they are more than committed to continuing to be out there beating the pavement, trying to get folks to make additional donations towards the project. And I think their thought process, and I certainly don't want to put words in their mouth, but I think their thought process is when people see dirt moving and they actually see it being a reality, they feel like folks will, some folks will open up their checkbooks.
Anyone else?
Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve and proceed with GMP Amendment to the existing MCT Design-Bill Contract and authorize a staff to review and execute the contract amendment after it's reviewed by the county attorney.
Second. All right. I have a motion by Mr. Lawhang, just thinking by Vice Chairman Barbie. Any discussion?
I just want to say, back in 2012, when I was first elected, this is one of the first things that came up, and you guys were everywhere with the little, you know, the little, whatever you call it, poster and brochures. You went to road rate, Chamber of Commerce meetings, and this has been a long time coming. And sometimes government moves slow, but eventually we get there, and I'm happy to this day it's finally arrived. And I'm looking forward to it because as we've grown, we need more venues out here to have more than just agriculture events that can be used. It's a multi-purpose.
Yeah, it will be a multi-purpose. If you remember, the board authorized, it's got around 7,000 square feet of conditioned space, around 4,400 that will accommodate space for event space. So based on the math, that's about 270 people that can sit at round tables. So I think the hospital, as from a comparison perspective, I think when they open up all the doors, I think it's 240. So I mean, it'll be a good venue for a lot of other things other than just, you know, obviously, it's going to be great for our high school students, 4H, you know, FHA, all those things, rodeos, but it'll also be able to be a multi-purpose facility. You're absolutely correct.
Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who carry seven, oh. Thank you, sir. Next item, number three, Enhance Voluntary Ag District Program Applications. Our presenter is Ms. Rebecca Brechner. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Just a little bit of background. The Stanley County Voluntary Agricultural District Program was created to encourage the preservation and protection of farmland from non-farm development, to generally promote agricultural interests, elevate the profile of agriculture in Stanley County. The VAD program is administered by the Soil and Water Conservation District, where I'm employed, along with the Cooperative Extension. There are already almost 14,000 acres of farmland enrolled in Stanley County. And today, I have two more applications for you that have been recommended by the Agricultural District Advisory Board. First up, I have a voluntary agricultural district application for Linda Mills' sample. This will be 16 acres off of Old Salisbury Road in New London that she would like to enroll in a VAD. Are there any questions I can answer? Do they need separate motions for each application?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I know we've heard about these districts and approved them in the past, but there's some people here that probably have no idea what benefit a person's getting. And the first thing I want to say is, they don't get their taxes reduced. Okay? By saying that, if you would explain the benefits.
Yes, sir. So first and foremost, we can provide signage that kind of explains that there'll be agricultural activities going on. We will enroll them with GIS to make sure that there's an overlay indicating that it's a farm. It requires disclosures to be made in real estate transactions, so people can't come in and be surprised that they live next to a farm and the things that go on there. There's some protections for water and sewer assessments, but for the most part, it's just informational.
Attorney Fur, we need that separate motion. Can we do them all together?
Mr. Shannon, I would think either way, but maybe best to do them separately, since one's a VAD and one's an EVAD.
Okay. All right. The first one we'll go ahead and vote on is the Linda Mills sample. It's at 365-80, Old Salisbury Road. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's clear the board. All right. I've got a motion by Vice Chairman Barbie, a second by Commissioner Shudo. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who.
All right. And next up, I have an EVAD, Enhanced Voluntary Agriculture District application. The only difference between normal VAD and enhanced VAD is that the enhanced VAD comes with a 10-year term. So they're signing for 10 years to agree to not do any farmland development. This has some benefits for soil and water. People who enroll in this program might be eligible for more funding from us, but the main difference is just that it comes with a 10-year term. And this one is on behalf of J. Kane, Inc., or Josh Amick. It is 184 acres off of Sides Road in Albemarle. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this one.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. Let's clear the board. All right. I've got a motion by Vice Chairman Barbie, and a second by Commissioner Hatley. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item, item number four, Planning Board Appointments, and our presenter is Ms. Bailey Rich. Ms. Bailey, welcome.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Give me one second. I'm going to get this computer up. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me. The first item I have before you is planning board appointments. As of now, there's going to be just one vacancy on the planning board. This board consists of seven members appointed by the Commissioners in staggered three-year terms. Terms for one board member expired in February, and a new appointment is needed. This position is currently held by TJ Smith. He is completing his first three-year term on the board and is willing to continue to serve for another. One additional application has been received. The new applicant is Brian Johnson. TJ Smith has been regular in his attendance and has some experience as a zoning official with the town of Oakboro. Please appoint one member to the planning board to serve a three-year term expiring in February of 2026. And on this slide, currently, I just have who the current members are and when their current terms end. And as you can see, TJ's is currently 2023.
Okay. Thank you, Bailey.
Aye.
All right. Let's clear the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint Thomas TJ Smith.
Second. I would like to just say, for clarification, because we've talked very openly about making sure that we're not reappointing the same members to boards, TJ Smith is only in his first term. It was an appointed position, so he's not completed one term, and term limits for this board are two full terms, so.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who. Motion carries seven, oh. Thank you. Our next item is ZA 23-01, Campers in Mobile Home Parks. Our presenter is Mr. Rinsberg.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Effer. Interesting proposal has come to us that kind of brought to our attention, and I'm sure you've read through the memo here, would allow an existing manufactured home park on a parcel of 10 acres or more to rent an existing space for the placement of a camper, trailer, or recreational vehicle for up to 10 months, except for recreational areas. Rules for campgrounds in our zoning ordinance would apply. This has been suggested by several manufactured home park owners. Parks with septic systems for each manufactured home will be limited to one camper per septic system. That's per state environmental health rules. All campers would have to meet RV Industry Association, National Fire Protection Association standards, would only be for hard-sided campers, not soft-sided or tent campers. Similar to our previous amendment to allow campers in the general business district, we expect this would primarily serve contractors during long-term projects. Some of our existing manufactured home parks have numerous vacant lots and would like to utilize these for contractors. Mobile home parks are inspected annually by our County Zoning Enforcement Officer, Mr. Swerengen. He would be responsible for noting whether campers have remained on the lot for longer than 10 months. Mobile home park owners which have camper capability would be required to submit a form quarterly by this amendment to the planning department, which would indicate what campers are on which lots and when they set up on the lot. All electrical, water, and septic connections would be required to meet current code requirements. Any camper, trailer, or recreational vehicle used in violation of the ordinance would be subject to normal code enforcement procedures and fines. And then, Planning Board spent a lot of time discussing this, proposed amendment at their meeting on February 7th, and included input from Anthony Effer, who I know is here tonight, owner of the Tyson Village manufactured home park. Planning Board added the language requiring quarterly reports to be submitted and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this particular zoning ordinance amendment. And you can see the language that's before you here that would be inserted into Section 601.1, which is our section for the RA zoning district. Originally, I had written this to include manufactured home parks that are in the manufactured home park district, but in reality, we have no manufactured home parks in the manufactured home park district. The district was created in 2000, the last mobile home park that was created in Stanley County was created in 1999. So we had none added since the mobile home park portion of the ordinance was added. But this only applies to larger mobile home parks of 10 acres or more, not smaller parks that may exist in the county.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Rinsberg?
Yes, I got a couple.
Sure, Mike. No, Mr. Barbie.
Before I could vote for this, I'd like to see a little bit further stipulations in here. One being that if they're going to be in construction work, that they have an affidavit or some kind of letter from their employer saying that that's what they were doing. Because I do know these employees that get per diems, come out of town, and I'm afraid that we're going to be in competition with our motels and stuff. But I would love to see some kind of information stating that they were there legally working. And I'd also like to see a 10-month. That's it, 10 months, and you're out of there at that particular campground. You can probably move to another, and not to return for 24 months like it says in the other part.
Okay. You know, obviously, the ordinance is yours, and so any changes, amendments, or redesigns of this can certainly be done, or suggestions can come back, whether we approve that tonight or whether we come back with revised language, but if it's something basic, we can probably do it.
I think that protects the people living in the area.
Right. We certainly don't want to upset the apple cart of the existing mobile home parks, but...
So what's the whole reason for not letting people come back for 10 months or something? Are they bad people, or?
Because it opens the door for people that are abusing the situation and are not really involved in working, but just want to keep. And there's going to be enough of them around at 10 months. Most of the time, the jobs will be completed at any time. Wouldn't be a problem anyhow.
All right. Any more questions for Mr. Rinsberg?
And Mr. Chairman, as you know, this would require a public hearing, and I'm sure that's on your agenda. That's next. That's right.
All right. Hearing none. At this time, I will open up the public hearing for ZA 23-01. Anyone here to speak for or against? Thanks, sir. If you don't mind just giving us your name.
My name's Anthony Effer, and I'm owner of Tyson Village Mobile Home Park. Mr. Barbie, I understand what you were saying about the 10 months and not being able to move back. Some of these projects are going on for up to 15 months, and even in your, the campground areas that y'all have now and have expanded recently, even in theirs, they can move to another site and not, and be there another 10 months.
I see what you're saying, but that's not going to be a problem or somebody abusing the situation.
Okay. When you say abusing, can I ask for a definition of what you're talking about abusing?
I think most of the time, these constructions, I mean, we don't have a lot of big construction sites in this county. And I mean, I know that probably some others in other parts, other counties. But I think if we open the doors, not saying that your particular site would abuse it, but there are other sites that I could see abusing this. That's the reason that I'm putting that in there. I think you're an upstanding man, and you wouldn't abuse it, but I can see circumstances where it could be.
I know that one of the other people that's already doing it, the lot rent for those campers, people think that they would just come in there and stay forever because they could camp at a, or have a cheap site. It's not a cheap site. It's $900 a month for them to use it. So that's not a cheap site. It's not a competing, you know, and you say with motels and hotels, the first thing is, The first thing is, this county hasn't got enough motels and hotels to begin with, because if you have anything here, they're overfilled and you ain't got nowhere to stay. And y'all, and the county has supported, and I'm not saying I want campground, but the county has always, in the past years, they've said that they want you to come to Stanley County because this is a tourist place. Okay, well, where's people supposed to come Stanley County when it's a tourist place? Mar Mountain this past year, or is in the process right now of redoing their campsites that are up there. So they've sort of been shut down from doing it. But there's not enough motels and hotels and different things for them to stay on. Yeah. Okay, that's all I got, anybody got any? Thank you.
Thank you sir. Anyone else here to speak either for or against? Hearing done, I'll declare the public hearing closed. All right, pleasure of the board. Okay. How'd you get that?
I did.
That language?
I think we're okay.
Okay.
That's under the conditions that they're working, that's what, I like that condition. I'll second it.
A motion to second, any discussion?
Yeah, I just don't understand where people are just working and trying to get a living, and we talk about less government. You're getting people who are working, making them fill out an affidavit and do all this stuff just to have a roof over their head while they're working and stuff. So I can't support this with the new conditions added on to it there.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose. Motion carries six one. All right, our next item is ZA 23-3, text amendment for parking space width.
Width, yes, so, and thank you on the previous matter, and I will confirm that we do have a, because I serve, as you know, on the CVB board, and we do have a shortage, you might say, of hotel space. It's a pretty common problem here, actually, so that's, there is a need in the county for that. And so hopefully that will come, I know there's a hotel proposed for Almaral, but it hadn't broken ground yet, so fingers crossed on that.
Bob, do you mind if I interrupt just?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Ginny, do you need that, a motion, we need to back up a minute, that motion, this suggested language, do you need it made that way, since we changed it?
I think we would need to include reasons for approval. And you may use the suggested reasons here, would be additional stipulations, or you may think of other reasons as well.
I'm sorry, I should have picked up on that.
And I know we have some new commissioners, and welcome, but yeah, for every zoning amendment that you make, you have to, whether it be a text amendment or for a map amendment, you have to have a, basically a justification statement as part of what you do when you, when you alpha that, and we try to offer suggested language for that. Of course, you can vary from that language, it's not, it's just suggested language. But you do have to have a justification, a reason for why that's okay to do that, or not okay, either way. That's state statute.
All right, I'll make the motion that we approve the text amendment ZA 23-01, to allow camper trailers to be placed in vacant spaces in existing manufactured home parks as proposed by the planning board. The change will allow the older manufactured home parks additional revenue and encourage contractors and others to stay in Stanley County while working on a job, conducting business in our community. And to add stipulation to have proof of working in the county or in surrounding counties, and to a maximum of 10-month stay for campground.
All right, I have a motion, revised motion in a second. Any discussion?
I've got a question. When you say proof of employment, I mean, what kind of documentation are you gonna require? Is it gonna be a paycheck stub, or is it gonna be a letter from the company they work for?
I think any of that would survive.
Whichever, I mean, obviously an affidavit, or I think a paycheck stub would work. And I guess we can, with the blessing of the board, we can interpret it that way. That would be sufficient.
All right, any more discussion? You got it. Your stipulations.
The stipulation is to ask on kind of affidavit to approve of working around the area and to maximize the study at 10 months.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose.
No.
Motion passes six four.
Then I think you left out the part about not coming back.
10 months.
Oh, 24 months. Oh, the 24 months, Matt, yeah. I think that's already in the camping, campground regulations.
I'm sorry Bob, I should have caught that.
No, that's good.
ZA 23-3, text amendment for parking space width.
Well, once in a while, we get something that comes down from the general assembly that we have to take an action on. The current requirement in the Stanley County zoning ordinance is that a standard parking place for business or residents, either way, be at least 10 by 20. The legislature this year added, or this past year, added just some small amount of language there that said that no local government may have in their ordinance anything that requires anything more than nine feet wide, 20 feet long. So that's the, you know, you can see in the school of government language down there, shall not set a maximum parking space larger than nine by 20. Well, ours said 10 by 20. So very simply, we need to reduce our width of a parking space requirement to nine so we can comply and actually have something we can enforce without, if we didn't do that, we simply can't enforce the parking lot, parking space size requirement. That's complicated to say. But it's a minor change, but just changing 10 to nine. We don't, you know, we have some requirements in our ordinance, talk about, you know, number of spaces in certain types of businesses and that sort of thing. And yes, we'll check it and make sure they're at least nine by 20. Hopefully, they're larger than that. I'm really gonna state an opinion almost in this. You know, in zoning, sometimes we get kinda overzealous in doing things. And if a business doesn't provide you a space to park your car, back gumming, it's kind of the business's fault, in kind of my opinion. But that's my opinion, and I'll step back real quick and say nope. But state statute says we ought to make it nine by 20, so there you go. That's as simple as that. Yes.
Is the 10 by 20 gonna be grandfathered in?
Oh, they're perfectly fine if they're larger. There's no, you know, we're not gonna go back and repaint parking lots, no. So yeah, the old ones are, yeah, you don't have to change, no one has to change anything. And any new business or anything comes in, they wanna make them 12 by 20, they could do that. You know, there's no, but we can't require them to be any more than nine by 20. So if Dollar General wants to have you type park real close, then that's up to the folks designing that parking lot. So they can do nine by 20, but they could do 10 or 20, or whatever, they could do whatever size they want to. As long as it's, as long as it meets our rule, which now will be nine by 20.
Is this for parking lots only in the county?
Yes, it doesn't apply to the city of Almaral, or Locust, or anywhere else. Just outside, outside the municipalities. And once again, a public hearing.
All right, at this time I will open the floor for a public hearing regarding ZA 23-3, parking spaces. Anyone here to speak either for or against this amendment, exchange? All right, hearing done, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment ZA 2303, to acquire the minimum size for a regular parking space to be nine by 20, as stated in section 409.4 of the Stanley County zoning ordinance. This will bring the ordinance into compliance with new requirements from the North Carolina General Assembly.
Thank you Commissioner Keane, do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Hatley, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose. Motion carries seven votes. Thank you Bob.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, our next item is utilities, McCoy Pump Station Building and Grounds Improvement, and our presenter is Mr. Dwayne Wingo. Mr. Wingo.
Thank you Commissioner Efer, board members. I'll try to be brief with this, I know it was rather lengthy in the explanation. Stanley County Utilities has completed a pilot study to reduce odors at the McCoy Creek Pump Station in Oakboro. The study was performed by the consulting firm Van Solutions of Mooresville, North Carolina, in partnership with Viola Water Technologies. The pilot study was initiated in response to a number of complaints received from nearby residents about intense odors experienced while outside their homes. The number of complaints has escalated over the past year as more and more development is occurring in closer proximity to the sewer pump station. The pilot study was started on January 23rd and was concluded on February 10th. The study involved introducing two chemicals which react to break down hydrogen sulfide gas to a water molecule and pure sulfur which has no odor. Sensors were installed to measure parts per million of the hydrogen sulfide in the air before and after the chemical reaction. At the start of the study, the reading at the McCoy Creek Pump Station directly above the flow channel was 100 parts per million for hydrogen sulfide. This was causing deterioration of the concrete channel, and in those conditions, it does require a respirator to perform work in emergency situations. Now, the reading in the hydrogen sulfide gas and the air around the McCoy Creek Pump Station was around 20 parts per million, which per OSHA Health and Safety Regulations state that you should only be exposed to that for about eight minutes. After that, you'll begin to experience some side effects consisting of migraines and some, and you'll lose a sense of smell after that point as well. Now, after introduction of these chemicals, which was, the two chemicals were 50% hydrogen peroxide and a proprietary catalyst called talon, which it's really an iron molecule, that the H2 levels in the flow channel were reduced from 100 parts per million down to 20 parts per million. And the measurements in the air around the station, they were reduced to 10 parts per million. And in some instances, depending on the level of hydrogen sulfide coming in, it was down to zero, non-detectable. Based on the sensor readings and the staff affirmation, which I did have several staff members come down there, I don't smell particularly well, but had some of the younger guys with good olfactory senses came down, and they're used to working in the station, I had to get their opinion of several of them as to what was going on. Could they notice a difference? They all stated yes, they noticed a significant difference in the odor, the chemical reactions. We're working to reduce the odor. Based on that, we've concluded that the pilot study was effective. It did reduce the odors of hydrogen sulfide gas, not only hydrogen sulfide gas, but there's other sulfide molecules, there are about 27 of them, and it does a number on all of them. Van Solutions has submitted an attached proposal, which you have, for a capital cost of installing all necessary holding tanks, sensors, communication equipment, metering pumps, along with setup and training to operate an odor control system year-round at this station. Staff has also received a price from Viola Water Technologies to supply the two chemicals necessary to cause the chemical reaction to break down the hydrogen sulfide gas. The capital cost is $78,250, and the chemical cost is $57,250, which, these chemicals are not inexpensive. The hydrogen sulfide is around $5 per gallon. That catalyst, which is called talon, that thing's $22 a gallon. But fortunately, the mix ratio is six parts of the hydrogen, or hydrogen peroxide to one part for the talon, so we don't have to buy as much of the talon. The total cost of the implementation of this project was $135,500. Staff is requesting a building and ground improvement project be approved as part of the West Stanley Sewer District Operations Budget to provide funds to implement this chemical treatment process. Budget Amendment 202390 is attached requesting the transfer of the $135,500 from the 631 Stanley County Sewer District retained earnings into the West Stanley Sewer District 631 Operations Account for this buildings and ground improvement. Staff has recommended approval of budget amendment 202390 to complete this improvement at McCoy Creek Pump Station. Thank you.
Commissioner Wingo, any questions for Mr. Wingo?
Couple.
Yes, sir.
Mine is, occurrence of this nature, is it common?
Yes, sir, it is common. All sewers create hydrogen sulfide gas. This situation is more pronounced because of the transfer distance. You know, McCoy's Creek Pump Station is in Oakboro, several miles away in Stanfield and Locust. They have their own systems which charge through a force main which travels to Oakboro. So what happens is, they also have pump stations which that sewer is sitting and collecting, and then by the time it gets to the force main down to the pump station, it's deprived of oxygen, which even increases. If it was constantly moving like a river, maybe not as much, there'd still be some, but just due to that travel distance, the situation's really exacerbated.
The 135,500 total cost?
Yes, sir.
To do it, how long will the chemicals last?
We're going, our hope is that, you know, our yearly chemical budget's gonna be right under $60,000, and we'll have to build that into the operations fund. But that's what's gonna be necessary to control the odors. We're gonna be looking at ways to try to make that go as far as we can. Obviously, you know, we can set a limit of less than 10 parts per million, we could set a limit at 15. We have the ability to control what level of hydrogen sulfide gas is livable as far as the neighbors around us complaining about it. So obviously, we're going to look at, you know, trying to stretch that as far as possible. Maybe we can get more during the winter. It is less pronounced than in the summer when it's hot, you'll experience it, obviously, and people are outside more during the summer as well, so they're gonna be more sensitive to it.
Is this more of a Band-Aid type situation, is it not better fixed than this?
No, sir, this is a treatment. You know, longer term, which I don't know if we want to get into all that, but it takes about five minutes for this chemical reaction to take place. So we're running, we've ran a line about five minutes upstream from the travel time. Longer term, I would like to move it into Locust further upstream once there's a regional pump station in Locust where we can treat it, because once it breaks down that hydrogen sulfide, it doesn't return. So the further upstream you can hit it, the better. But the problem is, we don't have a good place upstream other than at McCoy Creek to put it, because there's so many various sources coming into McCoy at present.
McCoy Creek's there across from St. Martin Road, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir, it's in the Ruby Ridge subdivision, going up St. Martin Road toward Almaral.
With the pump station in Stanfield be too far away?
Well, it's not only the pump, there's a pump station in Stanfield, but Locust currently has about four stations that discharge into it as well. And then we have stations up in Red Cross, there's multiple stations that are coming down to McCoy. And then we have pump stations in Oakboro as well, so that, it's kind of hard to try to, I think, you know, eventually we should have a regional station that collect both Stanfield and Locust. That would be an ideal spot. And then, you know, it's not a zero sum, we can put, we could put chemical treatment there, and we can continue to put chemical treatment in McCoy. It's just, you know, you hit it, the further upstream you hit it, the better.
It looked like a pretty expensive little.
It is. Yes, sir, it is.
Is this gonna extend the life of the facility?
It will, that's why I'd like to get it up further as possible, because It will, that's why I'd like to get it up further as possible, because the manholes upstream, which are not our manholes, they had over 300 parts per million concentration in there, and those manholes are not that old, and we're seeing a rapid decay of those manholes where the force main from Stanfield and Locust discharge, and then the manhole immediately downstream. Now, what I'm proposing, or probably will have to do, as part of the West Stanley expansion, we're going to be upgrading that pump station, we're probably going to go back to those manholes and put a liner in those manholes to protect them, to make sure they last, and we'll probably have to work out an agreement or understanding with Oakboro that will take over those manholes moving forward.
Any more questions? Love, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move approval of budget amendment 2023-90 to complete the buildings and grounds improvement at the McCoy Creek Pump Station.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion, second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries semi.
Thank you.
All right, next item is item number eight, Medical Freeman Resolution, and our presenter is Commissioner Patty Crump.
All right, thank you. This is as good a time as it is at the end, so I'd like to just first say thank you to Mr. Harold Schmecker for coming and talking with us and bringing us that data and your concerns. Thank you also, Mr. and Mrs. Borg, I see here on the sheet that you came from Saluda, North Carolina, to talk to us about what you're experiencing. I don't, are you still here? They already gone, okay, well, I hope she will go to more meetings and that she'll continue to use her voice, and that people will listen. She is heard here. And so with that, I'd like to talk about House Bill 98. House Bill 98, also known as the Medical Freedom Act, is a bill currently sitting in committee at the state level. This bill will prohibit state agencies, local governments, and political subdivisions of the state from discriminating against persons based on their refusal to provide proof of a COVID-19 vaccination, or to submit to a COVID-19 vaccination. Further, it would prohibit public schools and universities, states, and local agencies and local governments from requiring any person to submit to this vaccine. Additionally, it will prohibit mandated face coverings, and will protect healthy, unvaccinated North Carolinians from quarantines due to COVID-19 exposure. And I will say that I talked with Wayne Sasser this past week, our House representative, and he feels very strongly that this is going to be approved, possibly with a 72-vote majority, which would make it veto-proof, which is excellent for medical freedom. But, you know, it always helps when our representatives can hear from county commissioners and other leaders, and the voices of the people, and so I would like to present a resolution in order to get that teeth. But before I present the resolution in support of the Medical Freedom Act, I would first like to introduce Stanley County's very own Dr. Amir Kuastani, so that he can weigh in on the importance of the passage of this bill. Dr. Kuastani has been practicing medicine for over 20 years. He's board certified in osteopathic, family, and functional medicine, and currently serves as an associate professor of medicine at Campbell University Medical School. He has also served in the past as an associate professor of medicine at State University of New York Syracuse. Within Stanley County, Dr. Kuastani served as the medical director of Community Care of North Carolina for five years. He spent three years on the Stanley County Board of Hospice, and for four years, he was Atrium Stanley's pulmonary rehab physician supervisor. Those years also encompassed the recent COVID pandemic years. It's an honor to have you with us here, Dr. Kuastani, and I look forward to hearing your professional insight.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Crump, for the introduction, and commissioners, good evening. I've been asked to basically present pros and cons of mandating vaccination for younger people, because regardless of where we all fall with the decision to get a vaccine or not, as adults, we have lived through two and a half, three years of dealing with COVID-19, and I think there's, everybody who's taken a side as an adult in this issue already knows what they're going to be doing, they've already probably made the decision either get the vaccine or not. But there's a lot of questions left for younger people, and I think that's worth to discuss, because there is concerns from parents, we see them in the trenches, dealing with, parents who come to our offices that address these concerns with us, but more importantly, there are concerns in the scientific community, and that's really what I'm here to address, because personal perspectives are personal, when we deal with science, we really need to be looking at what science is showing us. So to show you what the science is doing, I'm going to just address a few myths that we have about COVID vaccine, and in particular, when it comes to the younger people. I teach my medical students that knowledge is, science is the knowledge of how things work, but wisdom is when you recognize the limitations of your science. And science has a lot of limitations. In fact, science has thrived over the years, because scientists have been allowed to ask questions. You must ask questions and refine your process, and then you get better in what you're doing. Many times, in the world of science, we have thought we have something totally figured out, only to come and recognize that it's not what we thought it was going to be. And I'm not here to give you a bunch of examples, and I'm more than happy to share this on the side later on. What I want to address is that in the scientific community, there's not a consensus about many things related to COVID, and one of them is, where did this thing come from? How do you treat it? What are the best measures, public health measures, to actually deal with the situation? And what are best treatments? There are a lot of people who believe all of these things are settled, but they're not, not in the scientific community. How many of the commissioners are familiar with the Great Barrington Declaration? Just raise your hands. One person, okay? So, two people, very great, thank you. So, the Great Barrington Declaration was a, something that was signed by three physicians that are epidemiologists, and epidemiologists are doctors who study disease and the effect of disease in communities, in society. So this is their job, to study a disease and the spread of it. The three epidemiologists were a professor of medicine at Oxford University, Dr. Gupta, a professor of medicine at Harvard, Dr. Kuldorff, and Dr. Bhattacharya, one of my favorites, which is a professor of medicine at Stanford University, they can remember, these are epidemiologists. They signed the declaration in 2020, and they believed that almost everything most world governments, in particular, the US government, was doing in response to the COVID virus was wrong. We have seven commissioners here, two of you have heard of this, the rest of you haven't. The reason you haven't is because this thing was quickly buried by media, that these are not people that are practicing medicine in small community hospitals, they are scientists well-known in their fields, and I can add a bunch of other names, but we're not here just to name names. The reason nobody has heard about this, because the stuff that they brought up was not consistent with the things that our public health office at the national level was pushing for. So it stayed quiet. They were not necessarily for the mask mandates, they didn't think closing down schools would help anybody. By the way, all of these are proven, because we have studies out of Sweden, out of Spain, that shows closure of schools did nothing, other than harming children, but it did not do anything to actually stop the spread of the virus. These people also disagreed, there is another individual that is well-known in the field, has signed this declaration, but it was not part of the three original signees to the declaration. And he is Harvey Hirsch, who's a professor of medicine at Yale University, also an epidemiologist. He has multiple studies that has been published, this man has more publications than most of us have here. He basically proposed that the early treatment of the virus should be in the community, because this is a community-acquired virus, as opposed to at the level of the hospitals. He disagreed with all the protocols that hospitals were using. Now, remember, this is a Yale University professor, but nobody knows his name, in fact, he recently left his job because of the negative treatment that he was receiving from the status co-practitioners. Science gets harmed when we refuse to allow different opinions be expressed. Communities really get harmed when science gets harmed. These professors of medicine, they were banned, many of them on Twitter, which is pretty crazy, because Twitter does not have a medical account, but these people, medical degree, but these people did. But Twitter will make a decision that the opinions of these physicians, in particular, Dr. Bhattacharya from Stanford, were not scientific enough to be discussed. That is crazy. I don't know how we got here, but we did get here. So I'm going to share these few things with you, and hopefully keep my comments brief. The people that have signed the Barrington Declaration include 47,000 medical practitioners. Forty, so anybody who tells you all doctors are in agreement about the way we treat COVID doesn't know what they're talking about. 47,000 medical practitioners, 17,000 medical scientists and public health officials have signed the declaration, and the numbers are growing. I signed it right in 2020 when it came out. There is no consensus on treatment, there is no consensus on whether use of medications early on in the course of the disease were able to save lives. Dr. Risch suggested use of hydroxychloroquine, I'm not going to make this as medical lecture, hydroxychloroquine is an old malaria medication. When COVID hits, we had two options, either to go to brand-new novel treatments, which means we had to wait for my pharmaceutical industry to come up with new treatments for us, and then get them out there to the people without putting proper testing, with putting them through proper testing, which is risky. Or we had to go back to our memory banks, dig what we had, and see if we have a medication already approved for a different use that can be used against this thing. So some of us did that, and some of us waited for the pharma to come up with new treatments so we can use on our patients. And the difference is staggering. How many people amongst you commissioners know someone in Stanley County who's died from COVID? Raise your hands, please. I have not lost a single patient since this thing started. Not one. Now, if I was the smartest medical student in my medical school, that would have been explainable, but I wasn't. This is not about being smart, this is about going back to the drawing board and actually looking at the research that was available. If one community physician can save the lives of all the patients he dealt with, and then hospitals are reporting all these deaths, should we at least pause for a moment and ask ourselves a question, maybe we're treating this thing wrong? Should we? How many of my colleagues do you think have called me and asked me, what are you doing? That is ridiculous, I think. In recent months, I've had a few emergency room doctors call me, you know, after the COVID kind of settled, and they've asked questions, they go, we don't see your patients in the ER, what's going on? I'm said, it's funny you ask, how much time do you have? Use of hydroxychloroquine and several other medications that are old, these medications are old and effective, and by the way, without side effects. An old malaria medication with minimal side effects that can be used early in the course of the disease, very early, can actually save the lives of patients, including people with multiple medical problems. So I've had liver transplants, patients that have treated, I've had people on dialysis, diabetics, and the list goes on, and all of them have lived to tell a story about the fact that they survived COVID. So do we have a consensus on treatment? No, we don't. We know that the early treatment choices, including use of ventilators, actually killed patients. Remdesivir, which everybody's so proud of, causes kidney failure and a bunch of other problems. Now, it's funny, because we're very comfortable using these brand-new drugs that have emergency approval for use, and the vaccine is one of them, but we're not comfortable using these old drugs, such as hydroxychloroquine, which you can prescribe for rheumatoid arthritis. It's a malaria medicine, we use it off-label for many conditions, including arthritic issues. So why are we not using these medications in a wider scale, is because the discussions are shut down. And I think the discussions should be open for science to thrive, and for people to be safe. Do we have a consensus on masks? No, we don't. We had just recently published an Oxford research team that came up in January with a study that confirms that use of masks for this particular infection was actually ineffective. The virus particles are extremely small, they actually cross through most masks. Not to mention, if you give it to children, they keep picking it up and putting it on because they don't know how to use it, and it actually creates more risks for getting the infection, not to mention the damage that psychologically we created for children by getting their adults that are taking care of them and the children masked, and we're still dealing with those psychological issues. If you don't know, anxiety rates, depression rates, suicide rates among young children has really increased in the past two years. And we can't blame all of it on the fact that COVID came, most of it is because of the way we mismanaged COVID. It's not because we had an infection. When there's a crisis, there's opportunity for getting better, we got worse, unfortunately, as a country. We keep blaming one another, everybody calls everybody else names, everybody who doesn't believe in the vaccine is stupid. I'm vaccinated as many vaccines as you could imagine, you can't go to medical school without getting vaccines, this isn't an anti-vaccine discussion. But should every vaccine be given to every person? That's the question we need to ask before we force children to be getting these vaccines in order to attend school, to get them before they can play sports. That's, in my opinion, a big mistake, and we're unfortunately committing, because we're not looking at the data and the research that is available. Myocarditis, a lot of my colleagues say, well, if you get COVID, you can get myocarditis. Myocarditis is an inflammation of the heart muscle, which can, in time, become permanent and create heart disease. How many people here would like to have a 15-year-old, healthy baseball player who attends high school, be forced to take this shot before the interuniversity to play for them, and get heart disease for the rest of their lives? How many 15-year-olds have died from COVID? How many young children have died from COVID? Does anybody know the answer here? Not much, we probably can count them with the fingers in two hands, nationally. To make children get a vaccine that is not going to save their lives, but has the potential for myocarditis is ridiculous. What are the risks for myocarditis? The new JAMA, JAMA is like the Bible of medicine, it's the Journal of the American Medical Association. JAMA Cardiology, just published, puts the risk at six up to 28 cases, 28 times increase, correction, six to 28 times increase in the risk of myocarditis compared to an actual infection with a COVID in young people. That is staggering. What are the risks for an individual who gets the vaccine? The Israelis have published their studies, this came out in the end of 2022, and Israelis are way ahead of us, because they got so gung-ho about this shot, they got everybody, including their cats, vaccinated in Israel. All right? So they're really seeing the damage. Why is this information not getting to the United States? It's again, we're all, you know, sitting in an echo chamber and just listening to our own, to the voice of our own, to our own sounds, to the sound of our own voices. The Israeli study on myocarditis showed that there is an 8.09 per 100,000 increased risk for every 100,000 individuals injected, young person, men between the ages of 12 to 20, with this vaccine or the boosters, there is an 8.09 increase, 8.09 incidence of getting, in fact, getting the myocarditis. That's eight people out of every 100,000. Doesn't sound like much, until it's your kid. Then it's a lot. When I was in medical school, when I was in residency training, I was getting my training for family medicine, there was a really nice diabetes medication came out called Resulin. I was thinking about that in preparation for this talk. Resulin was taken out of the market, I didn't prescribe for it because I had a very smart professor in medical school. who told me not to be the first to ever jumps on a bandwagon to prescribe a brand-new medication for my patients. He said, let other people's patients become the guinea pigs. Most of these medications make it to the streets with little study. The ones we put out during COVID got out with no study, pretty much. Resulin was taken out of the market, listen to this, because two out of one-hundred-thousand patients treated, two out of one-hundred-thousand patients treated got their liver enzymes elevated. Two out of one-hundred-thousand, we have eight kids out of one-hundred-thousand getting myocarditis, and we're still pushing this thing to children. How does that make sense? Have our standards changed? Oh, they're still the same tight standards for all medications. If there was another Resulin out in the market today, they will take it out for that frequency of problems. But why are we not taking this vaccine and re-looking at it for the use in young people? For women? Since we're talking about young men, this is a problem. Myocarditis is a problem in young women, in young men. What about for women, young children, young girls? Again, back to the Israelis because they have really published well on this. The Israelis have shown that there is already issues with menstrual cycles in younger girls who have gotten this vaccine, especially with the second booster. There is hints to the possibility of ovarian dysfunction. Does anybody know what that means? That means that if dysfunction becomes anything that is semi-permanent, there could be issues with pregnancy down the road. These people may become completely unable to have children down the road. Remember, we're vaccinating these individuals who have zero-point-zero-zero-zero-one percent chance of dying if they got COVID. That is ridiculously low, but we're exposing them to these problems. I'm going to read from a pre-print. Anybody knows what a pre-print's? Pre-prints are non-published medical journal, medical articles that have not yet been through the peer review. So this is, this is going to still have to get peer reviewed. But I have access to it, so I've read it. This is from Dr. James Thorpe, who studied the effect of this on pregnant women. When Pfizer and Moderna brought these vaccines out, they did not smartly tested on pregnant women. Do you know why they didn't? Even though the government had totally taken them off the liability thing and told them they could do anything they wanted, they're not going to get sued, they thought that would look really bad if they tested it on pregnant women, and there was bad outcomes. But some women got pregnant accidentally after they got the vaccines. Does anybody know what happened to those women? Women who got the Pfizer vaccine had thirty percent higher rate of miscarriage. Those who got the Moderna, ninety percent increase in miscarriage rates. Now, listen to this data from Dr. Thorpe. He's seen twelve-hundred times increase after the vaccine in menstrual irregularities. Twelve-hundred times. If there was any other medication that would cause this, it would be off the market. Fifty-seven times increase in miscarriages. I'm already seeing that in my practice. I'm not an OBGYN, but I'm seeing how many young nurses who have been forced to take the vaccine are miscarrying their babies, or they're producing babies with anomalies who won't make it, which is the next number. Thirty-eight times increase in fetal deaths and stillbirths. These are not little numbers. These are staggering numbers. And we should be more mindful of what these, what these vaccines could do to people. All I'm asking is that we should take a step back when there's this much disagreement scientifically about a topic. People should step back. Cool heads should get together, and they should discuss it. And if this is really as effective as people claim it is, which it's not, by the way, do you remember when they told you, if you get this, you're never going to get the disease? How many of you have family members who've got the shot and have actually had an infection? You're shaking your head. You've not had a family member who's had the disease after they got-
But I've never heard anybody say, if you take the vaccine, you're not going to get COVID.
Really?
Never, I've never heard-
What planet do you live on?
No, it's always been, there's always a risk to everything.
We will go over the quotes afterwards. Because the quotes are, you know, the sad thing about modern times is you can't take these things off-
I'm just telling you, you're just saying this stuff, and you just made a comment that nobody's, that whatever you just said, there is a risk. Nobody said, you're not going to get COVID.
But you're letting finish. We will discuss this at the end because I have the quotes.
Look, wait, wait, Dr. Kostani, wait one second. Look, guys, let's be respectful of everybody's, you know, comments or time, all right? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So all I'm asking is that we should take a step back. We should take a deep breath. And as scientists on my side of the deal, we should sit down, look at the data, look at what it's doing, and then make a decision whether this is something that we should be forcing in schools and other places. As politicians, you got a bigger, bigger fish to fry because you don't have enough information about these things. You really don't understand them. Just like they came in here and they just gave you information about parkings, and you had to ask all these really beautifully good questions that you'd ask Bill. You have to ask those questions so you know what you're dealing with, and then you can vote, right? So if you only hear one side of the story, you're not, you're going to be at a deficiency of being able to make your minds up. So hopefully, everybody will at least read a little bit better because this information is available. These professors that have mentioned their names, you should follow them on Twitter if you have a Twitter account because you might just totally blow your mind at how different the world is out there. You should know that so many countries have banned giving this, this vaccine to thirty-five years and under. Sweden, my brother lives there. Denmark, their national soccer captain went down after getting vaccinated and died on the field during the European national, European Championships, being televised internationally. They revived him, he lives, but myocarditis is a real thing. And the reason so many countries have banned this for thirty-five and under is because they're seeing the effect. The state of Florida, why go so far? The Surgeon General of State of Florida has said that thirty-five and under should not get the vaccine unless they are, you know, have extreme medical conditions that really requires vaccination. Let me finish with the quote from C.S. Lewis. I'm going to read so I don't fumble this. Of all tyrannies, a tyranny sincerely exercised for the good of its victims may be the most oppressive. Those who torment us for our own good will torment us without end for they do so with the approval of their own conscience. They may be more likely to go to heaven, yet at the same time, they're likely to make a hell on earth. This very kindness stings with intolerable insult. To be cured against one's will and cured of states which we may not regard as disease is to be put on the level of those who have not yet reached the age of reason, those, or those who never will, to be classed with infants, imbeciles, and domestic animals. I think we owe it to families to give them a chance to educate themselves against, about a vaccine that does not any longer show to cause immediate harm to children and young people. Make a decision formally and intellectually and based on the science that is available, and then be able to decide if their kids should get the vaccine and not be kept, not be kept to a level that they feel that the only way the children can participate in school activities or sports is for them to admit, to agree to get this vaccine done. So please consider that as you're going through this process. And I know the vote that matters is going to be national. I think that's really where we have to press for this thing. But I really want to make sure that at least at a local level, we have a little bit more awareness about this. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for Kostani?
I just want to say thank you very much for coming down and speaking truth.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Good question. How are viruses spread? How are viruses spread? How are airborne viruses spread?
How are they spread? So airborne viruses are spread by droplet transmission, which means you sneeze, you cough, it gets into the air, and people in close proximity will inhale or swallow. And it depends on the mode of attachment of a particular virus. mRNA viruses of this particular kind has a better tendency to absorb through the nose. So if it's aerosolized, which normally it is through a sneeze, unfortunately, the size of the pores that exist in masks cannot stop it.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Thank you.
You want me to read the resolution?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Resolution in support of Medical Freedom Act. Whereas the freedom to make personal health choices is one of the most fundamental human rights protected under the United States Constitution. And whereas many North Carolinians lost their jobs, their ability to attend school, their in-person access to public places and loved ones and many other freedoms due to their choices not to receive the COVID-19 vaccine and/or the resultant quarantine requirements. And whereas there are various reasons why Americans choose not to be vaccinated, including but not limited to established medical conditions, lack of long-term medical data regarding the vaccine's impact, previous infection and recovery preference for therapeutics, robust immune systems, potential adverse effects, religious beliefs, intolerance to vaccine ingredients, previous, previous anaphylactic and other reactions. And whereas during the 2023 legislative session, House Bill 98, Medical Freedom Act, was introduced in the House on February 13th and referred to the Committee on Health, and therefore be it resolved that the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, hereinafter referred to as Board, upholds the United States Constitution and fully supports the individual freedom to choose whether or not to be vaccinated against COVID-19, and parents' freedom to choose whether or not to vaccinate their minor children against COVID-19. And two, that the Board recognizes the historical efficacy of proven vaccines in public health but rejects COVID-19 vaccination mandates. And three, the Board rejects policies, orders, and laws that do any or all of the following. A, limit a person's freedoms due to a person's COVID-19 vaccination status. Said freedoms include but are not limited to access to or retention of jobs, school attendance, and in-person access to public places and loved ones. B, allow for the termination of individuals from state or local government jobs in North Carolina due to the individual's COVID-19 vaccination status. C, require public school students, kindergarten through 12th grade, or public college and university students in North Carolina, hereinafter collectively referred to as students, to use face coverings, provide proof of COVID-19 vaccination, or submit to a series of COVID-19 vaccinations. And/or D, limit students' access to school, i.e. quarantines, due to their COVID-19 exposure and/or their COVID-19 vaccination status. Four, that the Board urges our local legislative delegation and the North Carolina General Assembly to A, protect North Carolinians' individual freedoms and rights to choose whether or not to be vaccinated against COVID-19, and parents' rights to choose whether or not to vaccinate their minor children against COVID-19. B, protect unvaccinated North Carolinians from quarantines due to the COVID-19 exposure. C, protect unvaccinated North Carolinians' rights to access and retain jobs and to access schools, public places, and other loved ones in person without penalties or discrimination due to their COVID-19 vaccination statuses. And D, protect students' rights to choose whether or not to wear a face covering at school by ratifying House Bill 98, Senate Bill 121, adopted this sixth day of March 2023.
Thank you, ma'am.
I move approval of this resolution.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Crump and a second by Vice Chairman Barbie. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to have some discussion.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
First of all, we talked about this at the Health Board the other night, and the Health Board voted seven to four, I believe, for us recommending that we do not approve this resolution. And the reference to the statistics on the speaker earlier, I just want to read them, read them to everybody. Adrian, well, let's look at Stanley County. Stanley County, our health department put out statistics on August the 25th that we had one-hundred-and-fifty-three COVID deaths on August the 25th. On January the 20th, that number had jumped to two-hundred-and-thirty-eight deaths. And of that, of that eighty-some, nine were vaccinated and the rest of them were unvaccinated. The overwhelming amount of people in the hospitals were unvaccinated on ICU and everything else. They are facts from locally, local facts.
What is your-
They're local, they're local facts that was put out by the hospital. You could ask, if you want to go in the detail, I recommend you contact the hospital and the health department, and they'll do, they'll do that research for you. Also, and we also, we had the entire Alamo Fire Department went out. COVID was very low. They all went out, and it shows how fast it can spread. And viruses spread from person to person by breathing. And I get it. If you don't want to put a vaccine in yourself, I get that. I respect that. If you don't want to put a vaccine in your kids, I respect that. Then we used to go, you don't want to wear a mask, and you don't want to quarantine when you're exposed. That I don't get. Because that's all saying, I want to spread a disease if I have it because I don't care because I have a right to breathe and spread a, spread a virus. By not doing those cautions, but not even simple, basic, separate yourself from people. You don't even want to social distance. That's, that's what I don't get about this thing. And that's all I'm going to say about that.
Thanks, sir. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor-
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we raise our hand during this vote.
All right. All those in favor of resolution, Medical Freedom Act resolution, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Close. Motion carries six one. All right, next item is item number nine, resolution against NC House Bill 76 and Medicaid expansion. And our presenter is Vice Chairman Barbie.
All right, thank you. I'd like to make a couple of comments before I read the resolution. First one is, is I've been hearing comments that it's a done deal, it's over with. Wasting our time. I found that that's not true. It's still got to be voted on again. And by all means, this resolution is not to step on the toes or bite the hand that feeds us from our state officials, elected officials. I've talked to them quite a bit here in the last week. There's some things that were supposedly good that were in this attitude. This, bureaucrats have been pushing this bill for ten years at least. And they finally put some good things in it to make it worthwhile to get us, get some to vote on it. But one of them was the help for obtaining doctors and nurses in rural areas. And that's been put out, pulled out and put in a separate bill now. And there was a little bit of money coming to our hospital out of the package, which I found out is not a drop in the bucket for what they need. And the other thing was, is there was a clause added to the bill that if the federal government ever failed to uphold their end in finance this, that it would automatically be dropped. And my question was to them is how do you tell six-hundred-thousand people that two years later, you don't have any insurance? And they agreed that that was another thing. So my bringing this forth tonight, like I said, was not to step on toes or bite the hand that feeds us, but to support them in actions that they would prefer to take it to get the best deal we can get for our county and for our state. So I'll read the resolution. It says, whereas the North Carolina General Assembly has introduced House Bill 76, which is access to healthcare options, hereinend referred to as House Bill 76, in an effort to expand Medicaid in North Carolina beginning January 1st, 2024. And whereas House Bill 76 pursuant to the Affordable Care Act would expand Medicaid eligibility to individuals with annual incomes up to one-hundred-and-thirty-eight percent of the federal poverty level. And whereas Medicaid expansion would significantly expand the number of North Carolina dependents on government for their healthcare coverage based on the estimates from the Urban Institute in 2022, well over six-hundred-thousand individuals will become eligible as a result of Medicaid expansion. Currently, more than one in four Stanley County residents are enrolled in Medicaid, and proposed expansion will increase this ratio. And whereas coverage does not equal access to care, according to 2019 Civitas Institute report, eighty-three percent of North Carolina doctors are at full capacity or are already overextended. In addition, according to the North Carolina Office of Rural Health data as of March 2022, a total of ninety-one counties- a total of 91 counties are already designated as health professional shortage areas for primary care, dental health, mental, and behavior health. And whereas proponents of expansion argue the cost in North Carolina will be minimal since the state's non-federal share matches only 5% due to the American Rescue Plan Act incentive. However, the ARPA incentive will require in two years, leaving the state's estimated non-federal share to be between $500 and $600 million per year. Whereas a more cost-effective means to increase in health care, access, and enhancing affordability is to reduce regulation, increase market supply, and encourage self-sufficiency. Now therefore, it be resolved that Stanley County Board of Commissioners urge our state legislature delegation to vote against any legislation enacting Medicaid expansion, and instead promote legislation to repeal all certificate of need laws, expand scope of practice for nurses, physician extensions, and community paramedics, reduce unnecessary insurance mandates, and remove legal barriers toward full telehealth implementation, including but not limited to out-of-state licensed precipitators." And so adopted by this day, sixth day of March 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a proposal to accept that.
Okay, I have a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, that you bring. Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion?
Yes, once again, at the Health Board, they overwhelmingly, I think it was, I forget what the vote was, eight to three or nine to two, asked us not to support this resolution. My question is, if Medicaid expansion passes, are we going to deny their money in Stanley County? If it does pass in North Carolina, are we willing to deny accepting their money?
Well, I personally hope it never gets to that point, I mean, because I think once you ring the bell, you can't unring the bell. We're just wasting, our staff's already overstashed, and if we had double the amount of people going in there to try to sign up for it, and then you tell them, "No, we can't do it in two years," how's that going to make everybody in here look?
So basically, what I'm hearing tonight is that somehow the people who are working, and insurance is very expensive, and health is not a commodity, health is an issue that, you know, it's not like going out and buying a car. People get sick, they have injuries, they get hurt, and, you know, we don't want to help those folks that are, people call them the working poor. With the situation earlier, it's like somehow certain people could only be here for 10 months out of the year, you know? I just don't get it, I just don't get why we're not willing to, we're like talking bad about these people because they need health care. It seems like you're talking bad about people because they need health care.
That's not, that's not what's happening at all, Peter. You know, you're just, you're twisting it. The thing about it is, I work in health care, and what I can tell you about our Medicaid patients that we accept, we can only accept a few a week, because the reimbursements aren't as much. It's sad, you know? I want to help everybody, everybody wants to help everybody. It doesn't mean you're a mean person if you have to stop, because you have to meet your budget, and every company has, has a certain threshold, and so every company says you can have so many payers that are only going to pay you a very minimal amount. And so if you're going to increase the amount, we're already at a quarter, a quarter of our population in this county right now receive Medicaid. When this comes through, we'll be at a third. This is going to be a third of our population. The lines will be longer, those people will not have as much access now. They already have small access, because we have to say no to so many of them. Now they're competing with even more people that are trying to get the same benefit, and the same companies that are telling them, "No," we're still going to have to say no, because they've got to meet their bottom dollar. It's not going to work.
Medicaid wasn't designed to be a way of life. It was designed to help somebody when they're down, and then let's, you know, get them back on their feet and let them move on. I mean, they need to want to better themselves also. There's got to be a sense of that. We want to help the folks that can't help themselves, but there's so many in the population now that's capable, but just don't want to.
See, it's comments like that, that you're talking down on people. My gosh, you know what the cost of health insurance is? You know how many businesses do not provide health insurance? Small businesses?
Do you know how many able-bodied people are sitting at home not working because it's a better alternative set at home? If they make more money sitting at home, you know, maybe as a society, we need to change that thought, that mindset.
I just don't, I just don't understand the thought process there, and I never will. People are people, it's not like people are trying to get a handout when their kid breaks their arm and they don't have health insurance. It's not like when they're playing at the park and they're exposed to other kids, and they get sick to bring them to the doctor. You know, so you turn people away at your place, you guys turn people away, don't give them health care when they come in.
So does Atrium, so do all the big names, everybody does it, and we try to take as many as we can.
And they don't, they don't show up in the emergency room.
Well, it's a sad thing, it's a sad reality, Peter, and that's, that's what happens. I can tell you that a Medicaid patient, that's a Parkinson's patient, will only get three paid-for physical therapy appointments on a Parkinson's diagnosis a year. They get three visits. Now, private insurance, you might get 90 days, three times a week. It's, it's very different, and so you can give someone a Medicaid card, and you can look valiant for doing that, but if your Medicaid card only gets you three visits, I mean, what good is it?
His three visits to me help them. I just want to say, welcome to Stanley County if you have money.
Mr. Chairman, I have questions.
All right, Commissioner, I need to let everyone speak before we can call the question. With the opportunity, let me back up. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion, a second. What's the pleasure of the board, if you would indicate by raising your hand? All those in favors, please raise your hand. Motion fails fourth. All right, our next item is consent agenda, item number 10. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve, are there any second? Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Sorry, I was playing catch-up right here for a second. Board comments, announcements, and committee reports. Did I start with you last time? All right, let's go to the other end of the room. Commissioner Haley.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Lahon.
Last time I gave an update on the airport authority meeting, this time I want to give an update on the EDC meeting, which was held last Monday. And we had two groups of guests. One was from Custom Alloy, and the other was from Alcoa. Custom Alloy is the company that's locating out in Baton, in one of the Alcoa buildings, maybe one or two, I'm not sure how many buildings, but they should start their operations by the second quarter. Forty employees are the projected number of employees. Main jobs there will be machinists and welders will be needed, and they will be building parts for nuclear submarines, which is a very interesting operation. Alcoa reported that they had given 1,000 acres to Marah Mountain. They updated everyone about the environmental issues they were working on. There's a Clean Water Act permit that expired October of '22, and a new permit has been applied for, but until it's issued, they will operate off of the old permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chairman Barbie.
I don't really have anything to go, but I appreciate the turnout tonight and the resolutions. Like I said, I will reiterate again that there's nothing against our state officials, but just hoping that they give us some ammo, but in that vein, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Crump.
I would just want to say that I think we had a major victory tonight for medical freedom, and it makes me very excited. I've heard some comments from people in the community who have said to me that this is a lightweight bill, and I don't disagree. It is lightweight, it is only covering COVID vaccines. But I do want to say, there are a lot of athletes that still are leaving to go to colleges that are having to get the vaccine, and there are still kids that are in school that are wanting to go into the medical field. My daughter is one of them, and she may be faced with having to go to a different state in order to do her clinicals, and so that would be a hardship on us, but we would do it if we had to, in order to protect her. And so what I hope, that something like this would safeguard the futures of our children here, so that they can have a choice, and that's all we're asking. So, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shuda.
Just want to say, appreciate we agree on things we agree on, and we don't always agree with all the combinations, but we can move on to the next one. And just to clarify my statement earlier, I should not have said, "nobody ever said," because you never put yourself in the, there's 300 million people in this country, and of course, but basically with vaccines, there's never 100% thing, and they don't prevent, they don't prevent, they just kind of lessen your chances.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner King.
Just want to say that to the four that voted no on the Medicaid expansion, I hope you're voting no, because you really believe in the Medicaid expansion, not because you're worried about retaliation from what may come from different senators or House members, but I just want you to know that you're representing the whole county, Stanley County, you're not representing the state, so I hope you're listening to your constituents. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Again, thank you everyone for coming tonight, certainly appreciate your input, your public comment. Our next meeting would be March 20th, 2023. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you all.